This is rolling.
Dude, this is it. We're live.
Oh, my goodness gracious.
I blame, I blame Kyler for that. I don't know why.
I fully accept blame.
I have to, to blame somebody, so we're gonna blame him.
Welcome, welcome to a special edition of Minot Talk, everybody.
With a squeal.
We're here. It is off with a bang. We have the lovely Jonathan Starr's returned, of course. He is back from, back in black. He's back in black.
The Coden logos sported today.
You betcha.
Kyler.
I don't want to show my undershirt too bad.
Button, the top button. He's making stuff. He's looking good with his red tone.
Looking very pink today. Good lord.
Yeah, something about that sun.
I think it's.
Lack of it.
Don't call me out like that. They can't know I don't see the outside.
Yes.
I touch grass on, grass on occasion. I promise.
He's telling a lot of jokes. I don't know them. Alright, so we are live and we are going to be tracking the city council live.
Yeah, this is.
First time.
This is gonna be exciting. We have a heck of a show in store today.
Sure, if that's what you want to call it. And we have, are not sponsored by Bubbler. We are not sponsored by Bubbler.
But.
Have you taken a look at the agenda? It's, it's, it's action packed.
I was, I did earlier. I know, obviously tonight, the big thing we have is the public hearing for the city budget for 2025. That's one of those big events that's on the, on the agenda for tonight. They're, one of the la- latter items of the night. I know there's a public hearing on some new additions to the Renaissance Zone Board, so we'll look forward to seeing how that plays out.
So the first question of the day, and we want to hear you, you leave your thoughts down in the comments below. How long is this city council meeting gonna go?
Yes, how long will Jonathan and I be sitting here for?
I am stepping out by face, two hours.
I'll give it three. I'd say it's all in three. Last time I said I thought it might be short, it went far longer, so I'm, I'm going over.
He's going over. Yeah, well, I'm, I'm staying hopeful. But nonetheless, it's gonna be a good time. This is the first time that I know of something like this has happened, where we're gonna have, I don't know if we're gonna call it commentary, so we're gonna call it reaction and feedback.
I think that's fair. We'll add some context to some things.
Yeah, we will. We will. As we know it, we know a lot.
We do.
We've been tracking this for at least one week.
I've come to learn a lot in the past few months here.
There's, there's a lot. And so pretty, pretty fun time. We'll be here in a couple minutes. As soon as city council goes live, we'll be having their screen on the screen with us. So that way you will be able to see that and listen to it. And so we'll just be listening to what's going on at city council. And then as appropriate, we will be giving commentary.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do some pausing and playing and throw some, some thoughts in there here and there. And if we have something that, some context to add to something they're talking about, we'll definitely throw it out there. Like Jonathan said, if you guys have any questions, definitely drop a comment in. We will be here to answer anything you might wonder.
Give you answers.
Yes.
They may not be right.
But we will answer.
We will answer. That's one thing you can count on. So, tonight with answers. But we do want to hear your commentary. And that's one thing that we need more of. We need commentary. And that's why we're doing this is, is city council wants commentary. They want to know what your thoughts are on everything. And so this is just an avenue for you to be able to do that. Please leave comments. Let us know. And by the way, we did reach out to the city of Minot, or otherwise known as Minot.
Minute.
Minute. And they did say we could do this. So, so they were like, they, when I say they said that we could do it, they're like, we don't see any reason why you can't do this.
We're good to go.
We're fine. So it's not that they approved of it, but they said that it would not conflict with what they had going on. So.
They have no reason to say we can't do it. So here we are.
So here we are together again, and it's gonna be a good time.
I'm ready. I'm excited.
We're on a nine minute countdown, man.
Heck, yeah. The time is, time is on now. I know, looking, so looking a little bit at the agenda tonight, little what we can expect. First up after the, you know, mayor and city manager's reports, we have some planning commission stuff going on.
Alright, so here's the deal.
Yeah, go ahead.
We gotta make this fun, right? So we know, we know the mayor's gonna give a report.
What are we doing? Drinks, like shots?
No, we're not. I don't, I don't drink. Okay, so.
It's funny because neither of us drink very much.
We, we know you are really red today.
I am. It's weird. Like, I'm not even blushing right now.
Cameras having problems. But anyways, we, we know that the mayor will give a report. But is the city manager just gonna go with his submitted report?
Well, if we look at two weeks ago, he didn't.
He didn't, right?
Big, big presentation.
I like, I like hearing.
Railway Avenue. I agree. I, you know, I will go with, since I'm saying this is gonna be a longer meeting, I'm gonna say, no, he will not just submit the report.
He has some things to say as well.
Have something to say, something in preparation for the budget coming up.
Good to hear, good to hear.
I'm going with.
Alright, so after that, we got the planning commission, and the planning commission has been busy. There has been some interesting things going before the planning commission. That planning commission is the second most interesting with, with the city. That's the second most interesting public meeting besides city council. Because there, they are, there are some things going before them, and they have some, a lot of power right there. They can.
They do.
They can, which is, it should be.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm not saying power in a derogatory sense.
No, no, but just to speak plainly, they do.
If you can't get the planning commission, you don't even have a chance.
No, not to get to here. So the fact that these items got through the planning commission with the recommendations to city council to be heard, I think that says at least something about what it took.
Does say something. And so we're gonna be having some public hearings. A lot of zoning map amendments, boring things, but they're a big deal. All these are recommended for approval. I didn't see one that was not. Did you?
I did not, not as far as I've gone through so far, no.
They'll approve the minutes. They'll do all that stuff.
All of the, yeah, there's a plethora of consent items tonight. I think there's what, 12? So not nearly as many as we've seen in the past, but there is definitely quite a few.
They have a couple of action items. Those action, the one that I'm curious if it's gonna turn into something with the bond resolution, that might turn into a good discussion.
Definitely has a chance to. It's gonna be one of those items, either it's gonna end up having like 20, 30 minutes of discussion, or it'll have.
Or nothing.
Nothing.
Yeah, because we pointed it out, it will have nothing. But the highway safety implement program will have 30 minutes, because we're like, how do you talk about this for 30 minutes? They'll figure it out.
Watch someone, yep, find some questions, and about three, four city staff will be brought up and.
But the biggest one.
Last.
The 2025 budget ordinance is recommended to be approved on the first reading.
Yep. And this is, this is the public hearing. So one thing I'm really interested in is to see how many people are gonna be present at the.
Which stinks, because we don't get to be there. We're doing it here. Yeah. So we don't get to be there and actually see everybody in the room, although there will be the wide shot eventually on, on the live stream. And we'll be able to get a good feel for how many people are there. But yeah, that's gonna definitely be interesting to see.
Because there are times when that, that room, when it's full, it can be buzzing in there.
Yeah, yeah, it can be. Dude, I love it.
This is exciting. I am ready for the new forum. I hope whoever's watching is ready for this as well. And like we were saying, if you have any comments.
Dude, I got some breaking news.
Oh, break it. Yeah, break it down.
So we'll talk about this a little bit tomorrow, because tomorrow we're talking with Miranda Schuler. She's gonna be on Minot Talk at 2:00 PM. Gonna be talking about property taxes. And on the subject of property taxes, we are going to be hosting a virtual debate.
Are we?
It's happening.
Oh, no. What are the details?
We are going to be having Dr. Rick Becker, supporting his measure that he was able to get on the ballot versus the Keep It Local group.
Okay.
Represented by attorney Robert Harms, Bob Harms.
Okay, who's moderating?
We will be having the, I don't even know if both of them know. So they might be finding this out. I'm sending them the, they both committed to the time. We just have to get the final details all in place. But the Mike Blessam has committed to the debate. And the date that was settled on is a Thursday, October 3rd at 7:00 PM.
Can be going live?
It will be a live debate.
That isn't, that is exciting. I look forward to.
Lock it off on your calendar, be here.
I will.
Be square.
I have to.
We'll have Mike Blessam probably sitting where I'm at. I'll probably be sitting where you're at, kinda having the tech thing going, but also we'll be having some interest stuff, but he'll be doing the main debate.
So my question for you then, so Mike Blessam will be the main moderator. Will both of the contestants in the debate be live in person? Are they gonna be?
No, it's gonna be Zoom. It's all gonna be Zoom. So it's, it's a different, different style.
Oh, it's just, it's just.
For sure.
Yeah, I think it'll be great.
But we're gonna see how it goes. I, I'm excited for it. I think it has potential.
Oh, it does.
For sure.
So if you have questions about that, make sure you drop them in our comment section. Let us know. If you have anything you want to ask either side, let us know. We could maybe see if, we could get the moderator to ask.
Oh, for sure. Public, we're gonna want public questions on this debate. So if you have questions while the debate's going on, we will have opportunity for those questions to be asked. They'll be vetted. Uh, cause not every question, while somebody did probably tell you once, there's never a bad question. We have found that there are actually bad questions out there.
Or maybe questions that aren't necessarily relevant to what we're going on.
So when we run into one of those, then we will not be addressing that question. Nonetheless, city council.
Should be starting any minute. We cannot hear.
This is tech problem number one.
Audio.
First question you have to ask yourself, is there actually audio coming through?
Maybe.
Once we have that answered, then we can know if we have a technical problem or if they do.
This is fair. At least people.
So what question do you want to ask on the property tax?
Ooh, if I had one, it would be, so a lot of, I, I don't know specifics, but a lot of questions raised are where funding will come from if it gets eliminated. So that would be, I guess, my, it's obviously a big one, but that would be my main question I would want to hear both sides debate over. If it is to be removed, where could funding potentially come from for some of these items that might get a cut in funding? And on the flip side, why would it be a good or bad idea to keep it in place? And if this, if we do keep it in place, where do we keep, where do we go from here? Can, how can we still lowering these property taxes then?
Right, right. That's, that's a good question. And obviously there's some of that information down on the website, but it's gonna be interesting to hear.
A live back and forth between them.
Right, and, and get the true answer for that. So yeah, I'm looking forward to that.
I think it's gonna be a great event. Again, make sure you bookmark that here at the Decoden. Check us out on YouTube, Facebook. We have it streamed live, and that is Thursday, October 7th. You said at what time? 7:00 PM. 7:00 PM. So we're looking forward to that without a doubt. Plus, all of the other fun podcasts we have coming up with Mr. Jonathan Starr hosting. Make sure.
Yeah, so we missed a couple podcasts last week, but they're still recorded. So they will be coming out soon. We got one with Gary Imneth.
Oh, there we go.
Got one with Surl Sweden with the Hostfest.
That's gonna be intriguing to listen to. That's coming up in a few weeks here.
Yeah, so that will be coming out this week. And then we also have one with local entrepreneur Noah Schmidt.
Noah Schmidt, that's intriguing. So I, I really look forward to hearing the Hostfest one, especially with that coming so close in vicinity of when it's gonna arrive. And then on top of that, hearing all, if any takes.
That's pause. Pause. Look at that. They're showing off a police car right now. Now, there was some action that happened in the police department this last week.
This is true. Gosh, how did we forget this?
Oh, I don't know if we did. Okay, we have a problem, folks, that we are trying to resolve. Is.
Recap a little bit of that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Called the order of the regular city council meeting for Monday, September 16th, 2024, 5:30 PM. Chief of Police Dion Clu was placed on administrative leave with pay. So he is currently, there's an internal investigation going, that was at least the last we heard, headed by city manager Harold Stewart. Him and some people in his area are looking into the city of Minot Police Department, looking at some potential violations that happened there, if they did happen or not. And then also on top of that, looking at some potential reasons for high overturning a couple of departments. But it's, it's been an ongoing story. They haven't released a lot over the weekend. I've been working all day, so I haven't seen if there's been any updates today, to be frank. And I, I most, I, I think it's a weird situation. There has to be more to come out. You never know what could end up happening tonight, but I think they're about to go through the pledge of allegiance, so we don't have to worry yet.
Just did.
They just finished the pledge. Okay, yep. So yeah, they're sitting down, getting ready for today's agenda. Their audio does work, so we gotta figure out how to port it in.
Yeah, it was supposed to automatically port in while we're testing. That's what it said it would do.
That's what it sounded like. But hey, we're, it's a work in progress. First one we've got.
So right now, the mayor is giving his report.
Sharing some information with the council and with the residents. Yeah, Mayor Tom Ross, been in office since 2022. Was originally elected as a city councilman in 2020. Served his first two years before then foregoing that, the final two years of his term to run for mayor. And he did end up winning two years ago, and he's been sitting ever since. Looks like everyone's present tonight. So when they zoom out from left to right, we have City Councilman Rob Fuller, the president of the city council, Mike Janser. Next to him, we have, I believe, the city attorney, followed by Mayor Tom Ross, and we have the city, or excuse me, in between the city attorney, Lieutenant Governor, City Manager Harold Stewart. And to the mayor's left or right, we have the city clerk, followed by, I believe it's Mike Blessam, or Paul Pittner, then Mike Blessam, then Lisa Olson on the far right. Yep, I got it. Okay, good. But still just going through the mayor's reports, just typically it's some items that he's, some things he's done around the city in the last couple of weeks, if you want, which he's had to run to, some public appearances that he's made. It's, it's, it's a common thing, but he goes through it every week, just so we all know what he's been available.
We have a check presentation. I'd like to thank, give a little bit of history on this one.
Breaking down some history of some of the things that he's been doing.
Few months ago, I had a discussion with.
We're gonna get this going, and it's gonna be a great time. And the really exciting part about this is how we're gonna be able to answer any question.
To get some air quality monitors in the city and discussions with XL Energy.
There we go.
Some of our department heads, we were able to put something together, and we have XL Energy here, Beth from XL, to be a part of the check presentation. Do we have that?
Check presentation for XL Energy.
Check presentation. And I don't know, Beth, do you have anything you want to say? I'm not putting you on the spot, but no.
Hi, Beth Felner, XL Energy.
Good crowd.
Thank you for having us today. And I want to say thank you to Mayor Ross for reaching out to us. XL Energy, you know, we're not in the air quality monitoring business, but the environment is very important to us. And as we are a company that operates in eight states, including Colorado and Texas, wildfire and that air quality impact is something company-wide that you're paying a lot of attention to and thinking about in the future, even if it isn't impacting North Dakota right away. Somehow that smoke is still making its way over here. So we appreciate the ask. It was an easy one for us to say yes to, and thank you again.
Thank you. And we'll grab a quick picture.
Hey, gotta get the photo op in real fast.
If it's not photographed, it did not happen.
Picture it didn't happen.
Minot, North Dakota is taking a big step forward in improving air quality awareness. Thanks to XL Energy and the Minot Fire Department, purple air sensors are being installed at fire stations one, three, and the Minot Police Station to provide residents with real-time, reliable data on the air we breathe.
Creativity.
Sensors monitor air balloons, like fine particulate matter, giving you a clearer picture of the quality of air right in our community. Whether it's from wildfire smoke, vehicle emissions, or other sources, purple air sensors offer minute-by-minute updates on the air around us. With data available online and through mobile apps, you can make informed decisions for your family's health, like when to stay indoors or take extra precautions during poor air quality days. Thank you to XL Energy for purchasing these purple air sensors and partnering with the Minot Fire Department.
Very great.
City of Minot's social media teams always, at least in the last few years, they've been fantastic. They've done a great job.
But I think there are gonna be three sensors located, one on North Hill, one on South Hill, and one down in the valley. So we'll have a, a pretty good idea of the.
Oh, that's fantastic. Get a good array.
There's a live shot there that you can see.
Oh.
One is at the airport fire station.
Oh, that was there. That's their screensaver.
So thank you, Beth. Thank you.
Way to go.
Questions on the mayor's report, we can move on to the city manager's report.
Oh, here we go.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, council. As always, outlined as a memo with activities and updates on projects and different things for myself, as well as various staff, I would be happy to answer any questions the council may have at this time with regards to anything related to that.
It's been that kind of day for me too.
He knew, he knows what's coming to me too.
You know, here in the recent past, the second meeting of every month, we've had a kind of a financial update or 101 from our finance director, but given what's on the agenda tonight with the public hearing and first reading of the budget, we felt that that was enough attention for finance tonight. So unless there's any other questions, I don't have anything else for discussion with the council this evening.
Are there any questions of Harold? Seeing none, we will move on to item number five. That's the planning commission. Item 5.2, the public hearing on zoning map amendment. Minot's first addition. Now is an opportunity for those who wish to speak in favor of or against the proposed zoning map amendment.
One thing to note on the city manager's report, if you go to the link.
Second call.
Put in our description.
Wanting to speak.
You're able to read his full.
Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
Hey, this is darn not easy.
It is. Looks like they're just gonna be changing. Resoning a property from N1, M1, a light industrial district to CBD, a central business district.
Close the public meeting, public meeting and approve the agenda item.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second. And I believe this is also in line with the announcement that.
Any further discussion?
Last week about some things that are happening in the downtown area for.
Seeing none.
Like that.
Yeah, this, this is related to that. You're right. I remember hearing about that.
Oh, they're going electronic.
Last couple times you've tried, it hasn't always worked. Fingers crossed for him. I remember the last time they tried, the first three times that night or so. Work. And then it worked finally, and everyone clapped.
That was at like hour three.
Okay.
Here we go. Hopefully it works before hour three.
Exactly.
Yes.
Or are they just gonna go, oh, Janser's not present?
No, he's not.
Moving on to item 5.3.
I didn't even, I was too busy trying.
16 feet additional. What are the wishes of the council?
Next item.
Move approval, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion by Lisa. Is there a second?
No.
Second.
And Mark, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
We go, Mr. Ross.
I, I just had a quick question. This land that they're subdividing off, this is on the Spartan Finch building or whatever it is, are this, this chunk that they're trying to subdivide off there, is this where we're talking about putting our two retention ponds on this 16th Street project? Is that accurate?
We'll bring Lance up for that. Answer that question.
Lance Meyer, city engineer.
City engineer.
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Fuller, that's correct. So the city will be eventually purchasing Lot Two, which is where the detention ponds will sit for our 16th Street project. So that'll be coming to you probably sometime in November.
Okay, so they're, they're doing this because we're planning to buy it from them. That's, that's correct. Okay, thank you.
So it better get approved.
Exactly.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Olson. Yes. Pittner. Yes. Ross.
Yes.
Samuelson.
Yes.
Looks like they're giving up early on the electronic vote system.
Yes.
I have a fast. Seven go, two things done.
Yep.
5.3, here we go.
Moving on to item, action item six, a public hearing on Renaissance Zone case M-107, conditional approval for 11 East Central Avenue. Now was an opportunity for those who wish to speak in favor of or against.
I missed 5.1.
Item 6.1.
Even really count? That was the approval of the minutes, right?
It was just open for discussion.
Okay.
Second call. Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council? Mr. Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing and approve the item. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second.
So this is part of the Renaissance Zone stuff?
Yep, adding a little bit of a.
11.
I have a couple of questions that might be for Brian. On the application, it has the current value of $381,000, and then it says estimate value of $750,000. And on Ryan, the city assessor, on his estimate, after the renovation and stuff, it's gonna be 400.
Looks.
$80,000.
Mayor Ross, Alderman Samuelson. The city assessor's letter is accurate. The full and true assessment value of the property today is $381,000. The applicant is requesting the five-year benefit, which would, they had to invest 50% of the property's value. They're, they're proposing to invest $225,000, which is about 30,000 over the minimum required. The city assessor looks at the improvements that are proposed, and they would estimate that after the work is completed, the, the property would be worth about $480,000 at, at that point.
So on the original, like on the original application, is that, that was just an estimate by?
By the applicant.
By the applicant.
Yeah.
Okay, so then the same would be for the five-year estimated relief. They had $11,500. It has about $40,000.
Correct. Yeah, I would go with the appraisers' numbers. Those numbers are definitely more accurate at this point. The applicant put in estimates at that point, but after the application is filed, then we send all the paperwork to the assessor's office, and they come up with their estimates.
Okay.
Rob.
Brian, just real quick. So you said 381,000, they're gonna put 225,000 in it roughly? How are we, after they put that much money into it, then how is it only worth about $480,000?
I, Mayor Ross, Alderman Fuller, I'm, that would be a question for the city assessor. Like I said, the, the improvements, they're, they're not expanding the size of the building. It's gonna be like re-roofing improvements, HVAC, ADA improvements. So obviously it's gonna help improve the value of the building, but they're not really doing any major expansions within that building, adding more space.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, with the Renaissance Zone development, the business owner gets a tax abatement for five years of just general surface level here. Gets a tax break for five years. They're able to put these 200-some thousand dollars of improvements into their building, and then after those five years are up, then.
Yes.
Did someone vote no?
Yes.
Olson. Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to item number seven.
They should show us.
On the, is the consent items. We have 12 items that are on our consent agenda tonight. We've been asked to pull 7.12. Are there any other items that need to be pulled this evening? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council? Make a rule on the remaining items. We have a motion by Paul. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Pittner.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Samuelson.
Yes.
Blessen.
Yes.
Fuller.
Yes.
Janser.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passed.
Moving on to the, the, the only item pulled from the agenda, that is 7.12, Safer Grant Writing Service Contract, Alexa Poll. What are the wishes of the council? Move approval. We have a motion by Paul for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lisa. Discussion, Councilman Blessam.
So, and for, I guess for the chief, but more in general. So the way that I understand where we're headed here is we're about to approve a consultant to come in and help us write a safer grant to try to get the funding to cover three years' worth of three firefighters. Is that generally where we're at?
ARS, Alderman Blessam, yes, that is what we're looking for. I am going to be talking with the city manager. Since it is a three-year grant, and there was some recommendations in CPSM study about additional firefighters, maybe we could get six to cover the other ones. But that'll be coming to the city manager and then probably to this body to approve. At this point, the plan is, is for the three. And it is a three-year, no cost to the city, if we do, if we are successful. At this point, we are gathering data and sending it to them, and then they'll do an assessment to see how successful we would be. We're not even gonna go down the road if we don't feel that we're gonna be successful at it. And that's based on our response times and all those other things. So.
Okay, so thanks. So my, my concern with it is that we're doing an approval right now in our consent agenda that sets us on a path for a future council to already have built-in firefighters that we either need to fire or fund. And so that's where we sit. And so that's where we sit tonight with a $4,500 proposal in front of us to do the grant this way. And so I guess I just throw that to my colleagues. I don't, you know, that, that's, that's where we're at. This is, I know that there are additional approvals that'll come along the way, but we're, we're headed down the path now. If this is what we're doing and that's outside of the budget process.
Interesting. That is. A whole grant.
This, this ties directly back to the CPSM study that talked about. Proper staffing levels in a safe way that meets the National Fire Protection Agency's recommendations, which is the standard of best practices that we would need to do. That study came back and outlined that we were understaffed to, in order for our firefighters to do their jobs safely. So as we talked through the budget process and our commitment to try and bring back a recommended budget that. Held the line on property taxes. One of the things that we discussed in that. The fire chief recommended was before we build this into the budget, because it was originally built into the budget for 2025. That perhaps we pursue this funding that would keep that, the cost of that off of the taxpayers for a few years before we built that into the budget. So what we're trying to address here is a safety issue for our firefighters that came out of that, that study that, that we had done.
Context added. Yeah.
Okay, so if we, if we do have that.
Just doing our job.
I, I guess I'm wondering why we're playing around with it then. If we're, if we're putting firefighters in the field that are not safe today under the normal standards across the country, you know, I, I was in part of the budget discussions. I, I remember that conversation. I know where we were at, believe me. I guess that's, I sort of understand how we got to where we are today, but I guess I, we got to figure out if we're, if this is what we need, then this is what we need. Um, and I realize we, we made that decision in the budget early on, but, um, we're, we're sort of not matching those two thought processes in my mind. If we have the need, then we better find the funding.
Any further discussion? Scott.
I, I would be in agreement with, uh, Alderman Bless them. Cause we're, we're, we're setting up future councils for. Funds that we, we don't know what the allocation is going to be, where it's going to come from. And I think we should actually have the discussion.
This is an interesting one.
So it's not just.
Going through a grant process, looking for money for it.
So, so it's a grant where it would pay for three firefighters for three years. But then after you get those three, where does the funding come from? That's what they're talking about now.
A question for chief. Chief, are you fully staffed? Or what is approved?
I currently am. Um, I did, did have a resignation, but I'm actually hiring, I think, one day before that guy leaves. So yes, I am fully staffed.
Okay, thank you.
Way to go.
I mean, we will have openings between now and three years from now. And I, and I get the concern of tying the hands of future councils, but through, through, through attrition, we can choose not to hire new positions if.
Who does he promoting a business there on the, on the diets?
If I could read it, I would say yes.
I shine car wash. I have no idea. I was, I was kidding to anybody that cares.
Within the next three years or, or five years from now. So just my thought.
Chief, is this just, is, is this just kind of an exploratory? Uh, uh, with the consultant?
Mayor Ross, um, when we were going to put it in the budget, like city manager Stuart said. This is an option for us that we could save three years of staffing. Costs on the citizens to be able to save the money. So I asked for it to come out and we had a long discussion because he is. Very much in favor of safety and making sure we have the staffing that we need. Just to be able to take a shot at this.
Hopefully the odds coming through five.
We do have some anticipated.
As long as it is, we should be all set.
And retirements the next few years. Um, actually they're going to be the chief officers or most of us are going to be leaving and retiring. So.
She says, most of us. Sounds like she's referring to herself as well.
So chief, could you, could you elaborate? I don't want to make sure I caught what you were saying before. So were you, were you saying actually when we start this grant process, you're going to explore whether we should be adding six? And, and that was part of the question that I had before. The three that we talked about during budget, the budget process was three for one station. And that actually had to occur across five stations is the way I eventually came to think of it in my head. Is that truly the case to be the PSM is that we have to add 15 firefighters across the five stations over time?
Mayor Ross Alderman Bless them. There's actually, uh, quite a few recommendations from CPSM for staffing. One is to add an additional engine. That would be 12. Um, one is to add an additional three or one, um, per shift to one of the ladder trucks that we already have. There's recommendations for fit, which is a field incident technician. And that would. Chief officers that are going to be leaving. So there's multiple things, um, that we've been discussing and how we can fund them. So we're kind of weeding through all those recommendations and then how can we, you know, use a safer grant to get potentially those fit? The fields incident technicians, and then we'd be able to do some succession planning for the chief officers that are going to be leaving. Cause that is such a different role than what a normal officer does, a captain does. You know, their boots on the ground incident and then you take them out and you, they have to be, you know, just overseeing the incident and commanding everybody on the scene. And it's hard to, to take them away from their normal duties to get them the training that they need and the, and the, on the job training that they need.
And continue. So can you talk about the timeline? Um, so with, with, uh, if we went forward and we, let's say we rewarded a grant or. Cause my assumption is even with the grant, that's where that cash has got to come in. We've still got to have the positions budgeted. Is that right? So at, at the earliest, the way we sit right here tonight, we got work to do later tonight, but that's not in there for 25. So 26 would be the first time that we would see these three firefighters, even with the safer grant.
If we're successful in getting the grant, we would propose a budget amendment that would receive the funds and then budget the expenses. And the three firefighters would be added into the budget at that time. So it's dependent in, I guess, in response to the conversation. If you don't want to pursue grants for this, you want to talk about the city funding at a hundred percent, we can do that. We're just a staff. We're trying to provide that relief to the citizens that they didn't have to pay for it yet. But we could still add the services and the staff if necessary, but if the council wants to go and we can talk about this later in the budget conversations. If you feel that the, the city and the citizen should pay for that now, uh, we can make those changes and we can add them in the 2020 and five budget or 2026 budget. But as the chief outlines. For NFPA standards for us to get up to that level, uh, there's multiple changes we need to make and staff is trying to take the approach to phase that in over time in a fiscally responsible way. That hopefully minimizes. Trying to put all that on to the, onto the budget all at once. So, but we'll follow the speed and the direction of the council wants to go. Depending on what you choose to do. My ultimate goal is to get our fire department to a point that we're meeting the NFPA standards. Because that. Their safety, the safety of our citizens.
I'm surprised it's turned into all of this frankly. A lot more depth than I anticipated with this.
So for me, I guess, to me, I flip that over. To me, we should make the case that it's a need and then decide, okay, is there a grant? Because if it needs there, we better figure out a way to do it. And then if there's a grant available, great. We offset the cost for a little while.
Great point. From Alderman Bless them.
Yep.
It, it's, it's sort of pulling it.
Where he's coming from.
Common denominator is a starting point, setting up a future council to, to foot the bill is really what it comes down to. So. I'm, I'm just having a little bit of a hard time with it, I guess.
Any further discussion? Lisa.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just a couple of points. First off, if we can save our taxpayers, our, our local taxpayers, local dollars, it just makes sense to me. And so I'm grateful that our city staff is looking at these grants and, and hopefully we're able to, to get them. Um, and as far as having future councils deal with something, that's their job. Tonight we have a job because we've been elected and three or four years down the road, if there's different people sitting in these seats. It's their job to make the decision at that point, but we can't worry about them. We need to take care of what we need to take care of tonight.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Kelly.
Don't look at me.
Seeing none, please call the roll.
Is she? Be quiet.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Samuelson.
No.
Bless them.
No.
Fuller.
No.
All right.
Janser.
Yes.
Olson. Yes.
No, it's four three.
Four three.
All right, that's an interesting one.
Moving on to item number eight on the agenda. That's our action items, eight point one driveway appeal and request for special permit twenty two.
A lot of things. We live in a debt of thirty, thirty trillion plus nationally.
This is a thing. This is, this is how it's like at this point.
Do I need discussion? Lisa.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be voting in favor of this based on the, the memo that came from city staff. However, this is the second time that we've done this in a couple of weeks. And I think if this is going to continue, then we obviously need to. Look at the, at making it a permanent change so that we're not going to be kind of piecemealing this each time that someone makes the request. So that would just be my, my concern that if we continue to get these, we need to look at it more holistically.
Probably.
Kind of on the other side of that from Alderman Olson, I think the process is working correctly. That's what a variance is for. We have an ordinance in place and they can come to us and ask us to change it or give them a special variance if we want to. So. I mean, I don't mind that these come before us if people have questions and want to work the process. I, I think. If we take it away and just make it open, then we're going to have, that's where the problems probably start, I would assume. So.
Any further discussion?
So.
Seeing none, please call the roll.
Fuller.
Thoughts have been said.
Yeah.
In a pass, not a problem.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
It's just argument done. Do they want to?
Do they? Moving on to item eight point two. The 2024 bond resolution.
Of these.
For 2024.
Yeah, without a doubt.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Lisa. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. Is there any discussion?
Gosh, it's flying.
Any discussion?
So I'm, I'm not going to be in favor, voting in favor of this. And the biggest reason is, is because of the, uh, lighting district. I, I believe that the city shouldn't be putting more on property owners than they already have. Our city has.
Here we go.
Forty million dollars in general fund reserves. And we're going to have the taxpayers that already have. Basically given for that reserve. To ask from, to ask them to give more.
This is an interesting conversation.
We give downtown businesses a hu, we give up to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for improvement for a facade program for businesses downtown. We spent a million dollars almost on signage, on a signage program. We approved to spend one million dollars and then it becomes three million dollars for a quiet zone.
Hey.
We give millions of dollars in property tax relief for business owners to improve their properties. And now we're asking. Our property taxpayers to pay more. And on top of that. In that bonding. We're asking them to pay for the engineering for. People that already do engineering for the city. Or have, there's administration costs on there, which is what the city is doing, the administration and stuff. And I, I just think, I don't think we should be doing that to our taxpayers.
Is there any further discussion? Rob.
Yeah, um, I'm going to. Agree with Scott here on this. Again, when we look at the lighting district and everything else, the city's putting a bunch of fees on top of the original amount again, we're charging our tax, our citizens. More to handle this and, and to finance it and do all of that for them. My question would be with the lighting district. Aren't lights part of essential city services for public safety? I mean, why do the citizens have to pay for that when we're paying property tax on an annual basis every year? And the second one on the, on the traffic signal district, that one seems kind of weird because Trinity was the one who requested that traffic signal out there. Why are we paying for it as a city? So those are the only two questions I had, and I, I'm not quite sure that. That this is fair to the people in that lighting district at all.
Mike?
Uh, I guess just a clarification for me. Is this, I'm, I'm with where, where, uh, the two aldermen are, are thinking here. But all these decisions have been made, right? I mean, council's already acted on these. We're at the final last step. In fact, did we, did I get that right? We issued these lots. So I, I don't know how that process works exactly this way that we approve it tonight when we actually sold them, I think earlier today or whenever that was. So that's a little strange to me. Um, but.
This city council, there's just an interesting vibe at least.
Yeah. So if it's, if that's true and it's already been sold, why even bring it before council?
But it feels like everybody's having a Monday. It feels like the.
Janser's not there.
It's just like, you know what, guys? We're just going to cut to the truth. Our true feelings.
This right to the.
Here we go. Finance director.
Mayor, members of the council, uh, this was actually last year when this, uh, districts, when these special assessment districts. Came in front of the council for approval and there was considerable discussion on how the funding was going to work. Uh, once the, those were approved and we went through the process, the project was constructed. The contractors have been paid and now we're just in the process of closing that out and certifying the special assessments.
Any questions? Thank you, Dave. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
So you're going to pass?
Four. Or six two. Or five two.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Samuelson.
No.
Bless them.
Yes.
Fuller.
No.
You called it. Well, I mean, you said three.
It was either five, five, two or four, three.
I forgot to call Janser, but he did put his in. So it does show up there that it was.
Hey, so the, like, it was a hybrid model that finally worked.
Janser's doing it electronically and no one else.
Item four three, the 2026 highway safety improvement pro, program signal revisions. What are the wishes of the council?
I think we're going to have a lot of.
Nobody wants.
Wishes of the council?
Nobody wants to approve anything.
No one wants to take.
We have a motion by Mark.
Second.
Second by Rob. Any discussion?
There's quite a few people there and no one really got up. Are there for the budget?
Oh, yeah.
Is there a, Stefan, there's a presentation that we've got. Do you intend to go through that or?
What's interesting, and this is. A framework that they go through, but everything has to get approved before there's discussion, right?
Yeah.
But there's never, it's something I moved to not approve this.
Yeah.
A second, like. They'll be approved and then let's talk about how bad it is.
Really?
Yeah, there's never a motion to not approve.
Really background on this project. Jen, can you go to the next slide?
They'll, they'll go and all agree to not pass it and then they'll.
Back in 2021, the city submitted for a highway system improvement program grant, H SIP. Uh, we, that 26 intersections, combination of. Left turn signal head improvements, kind of flashing yellow arrow, protected green arrow, uh, accessible pedestrian signal push buttons. Those are the push buttons that really talk back to you, um, tell you which street to cross.
Uh.
Pedestrian countdown time. That's your walk, don't walk with the countdown. Yeah, dynamic no right turn sign. That's kind of this pedestrian safety improvement for there. So on the right there in the green is the 26 intersections that were originally applied for as part of that project. Jen, can you go on the next slide?
Jen, engagement director. She does fantastic job.
They do a, what's called a signal warrant analysis. So all those signals in there that are kind of circled in red, did not meet volume warrants for traffic signal. But only two are recommended for removal. That's really the North Broadway and Fifth, Sixth Avenue and the verdict especially east, Eighth Avenue, um, southeast. The reason the other ones aren't, you could say recommended for removal is that there's other underlying conditions.
Restway east and eighth avenue. One right by the.
Future growth site distance, these slight distance issues.
Like by the Capri and ground round.
So what we're looking for.
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to look closer.
Here, recommendation from council on path forward so that the state can finish out the design for this project. And kind of get that back to bed, back to council. There's three main options we can do. Really, this is, I'm going to say from North Broadway and Fifth, Sixth. Oh, the options are the same. But they can be made independently. So the first option, option.
Bar, yeah.
Kind of walk you through kind of this little table here. Option one, do nothing. That is, we request the intersection to be removed from the project. No cost, um, for the H the project. Number two. Is the city could write a justification letter, expression or desire to have this, the improvements put into the project.
is the city could write a justification letter expression or desire to have this, the improvements put into the project. Um, the DOT just told us that instead of the five percent cost share we would have for this intersection, it'd be bumped up to a fifty percent cost share.
Yikes. Jeepers.
Or option three, or the removal of the signal. This is what staff recommends for North Broadway and Fifth Sixth Avenue. But I also want to throw. Was right to call.
So by Wesley's?
This intersection is due for improvements from both a.
I think.
Signal cabinet and video.
Across from Magic City Car Wash? I think so. That's how, that's right. Uh-oh.
Guys.
Lost him. We'll be back. We'll be, we're coming back. Don't worry. We lost. Uh, pretty live, pretty frequently. Yes, there's, they're back. Someone that lives in that area, my own little two cents, I don't think I liked right by the fairground.
Uh, move forward with that. We could write the justification letter to keep the improvements in.
That one you're talking about?
Or we could remove the signal with a conversion to a rectangular rapid flashing beacon. RFB is similar to what's out by the zoo. And that said, same thing. That intersection is due for cabinet video upgrades. That's about a hundred.
Yes.
Using twenty twenty four funds. And then also.
Couldn't just put up temporary ones during.
Staff understands.
Probably be expensive.
And then have to have upkeep for it during that timeframe.
So what the DOT recommends and staff supports is during special events, the intersection.
The timing on them would make no sense.
To go from a two-way stop to a four-way stop with a rectangular rapid flashing beacons to support that pedestrian.
Oh. Pedestrians will get you. Peds.
So.
Pet crossing, right? Yeah.
There weren't really comments on North Broadway and Fifth Sixth Avenue. There were comments on Verdic intersection, Verdic and Eighth Avenue by the state fair. State Fair, Verendry Electric, Amara Soccer Association all wrote letters to the city. Opposing the signal removal for that intersection. But ultimately, staff recommends option three, the signal removal for each intersection with the conversion at Eighth Avenue with the state.
Why does? The Minot Soccer Association oppose it?
Because they operate their winter soccer league out of that. Um, it's one of the exhibit buildings for commercial buildings in the state.
On the motion. And so is the motion to accept the staff recommendations, which would be option three for both items in one motion?
Mark, you were the motion.
Yes.
That was your intention?
Yes.
Sure, we'll go with that.
I guess my take on it is we don't have a lot of feedback on Broadway and Fifth and Sixth. Um, you know, just me, I I drive through there a couple of times a day sometimes. Um, that one makes sense to me. The the one at the fairgrounds is a little tough. Um, and I would actually rather see this split for discussion even. To me, the the Broadway and Fifth and Sixth is pretty straightforward. I think the the fairgrounds, we should have some discussion on. That's my take on it.
Would it, would that be okay to split those, Mark? Without objection?
I'm agreeable to that.
Second, is agreeable. Are there any objection from the, that's okay to go with that route?
That's fine. You just have to decide which one you're gonna address first.
Okay, we'll address the, we'll address the the Broadway one first. Is there any further discussion on the Broadway?
Yeah.
So again, this is what my Wesley's.
Yep. Wesley's tired.
Right.
And just a point of clarification. So the motion on the table in regards to the Broadway signal, is it removal? Okay, option three is removal of the signal.
That's correct.
Dancer?
That's correct, yes.
No, your vote. Sorry.
Oh, yes.
Olsen?
Yes.
Pitner?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Samuelson?
Yes.
They tried.
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Passes. Now we'll move on to, uh, the East Verdic one out by the fairgrounds.
First one's easy, easy pass. Now they're gonna talk about this.
So and and maybe for you, Stefan, I guess, you know, this was, this was before I was on council. I'd like to understand a little bit what some of the concerns were from the letters that were received. Because again, as as I went through there, drove out again, certainly during events, this is a big deal. I mean, even, you know, the thought that came to my mind was during events, if we removed it, do we need, you know, do we need an officer directing traffic?
Make it to the temporary ones. I was like, go.
Four-way stop, especially with multiple lanes in both directions, as well as a turn lane left, um, from the hotel side. I I don't see a four-way doing real well during that period. And so that's where my mind went. First of all, and then even outside of that, you're you're at high rates of speed. Are we at forty on Verdic? It's thirty.
Forty, forty-five?
No one goes thirty.
Cause I was, that's the other thing I was worried about is just high rates of speed.
Who drives that road every day?
So you must be talking about yourself.
No one goes thirty.
Pretty well. I get worried about the high rates of speed. So just driving through it, living here all my life, that that intersection to me seemed pretty iffy to take the light out.
Hey, I've only lived here fifteen years.
I guess feedback on on what their feedback was.
We talked with him. He didn't live here all his life. He moved away. He did for a while. Came back. Yep, yep. He busted.
There's no event out there. A typical day that's not warranted. So the DOT standpoint was, well, if it's not more than typical day, let's remove that. And we'll come up with really another solution, which is the always stop.
One bell down.
Pet head flash alternative on there.
I forgot my ghost.
They did come back and say the city.
I was in.
To keep that signal, um, with, I think it was option two or really option one and two. Um, so they are okay with that signal being in place for that. And so are we if, uh, council ultimately goes that direction.
If I continue, just to clarify then, so did I catch that right? That that would mean a fifty percent cost share? If we chose to keep it sort of against their advice with the warrant?
Correct.
Okay.
Interesting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Stefan is, we see him during the reconstruction projects that are going on right now, temporary signs during state fair. I mean, is that an option to put up as temporary stoplights?
There's my idea.
What, like, continue, cost on on something like that for the city or do we own?
So the city does not own signals. Uh, for example, the two sets of portable signals we had this year, I think around the contractor, thirty grand each, um, thirty grand for the whole setup. Okay. Okay. That's a rent for a month. You know, if you do.
Done that six grand a year.
For that, maybe we can bump that down year after year.
I mean, there's no need to buy them. I'm just kind of surprised mine doesn't have a set their own.
And them had objections. What was Verendry's objection?
I believe they have their annual meeting there. So they have like two thousand people show up at one night.
Fair enough.
Any further discussion?
Scott? I I would agree that for most times that signal probably isn't needed. Living over there and using that road every day, there are many times when it is needed, when there are events. Right? I don't know how.
And that's where Verendry's point is good is they're almost for everybody that is events.
It would do the trick. I mean, when you go to, especially the state fair.
Also, the races on Sunday nights.
Sundays after racing. There you go. Traffic backs and.
They're listening to us.
Yeah.
I think.
Which way is this? Are they listening to us or are we listening to them?
You're beating them to the point.
Exactly.
Any further discussion? Lisa?
Yes, and and I don't know if you have the answer, Stefan, or or perhaps someone else, but what would be the funding source then if we left?
Reserves.
Okay, he's looking still. I couldn't tell there for a second.
Great question there. Alderman, Lisa Olson. It is a very good question.
I I assume you're probably right. It'll come from reserves.
I just want to clarify the motion on the floor would be to approve the staff recommendation since that was the motion that was split. So just some clarification there.
Good to know. They're gonna have to vote this down or approve it, but it'll be voting down. It's no matter what you'd be voting down, but.
Yeah, I guess unless they were to amend the amendment and vote to approve a different option than the recommended one, but.
Sales.
Convolutions of the parliamentary system.
Sales task, sales tax infrastructure funds.
Okay, thank you.
Fair enough.
There you go. Reserves.
Yep.
Any further discussion?
Sales tax reserves.
Thank you, Stefan. Scott?
So just to clarify, the vote is to remove it.
Nope.
The vote is to. Yes.
Yes, yes, but is to remove it.
Which is option three.
Staff recommendation.
What we're voting on. See, no further discussion?
How's it gonna go?
Please call the roll.
I have no idea on this one.
Dancer?
No.
Oh, won't pass.
Pitner?
Yes.
Ross?
No.
Samuelson?
No.
Bless him?
No.
No, it's 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 a landslide, buddy.
Six, one vote against. That's, I think that's the first one, six, no, we've we've had the new councils come in.
Paul Pittman really liked it.
Mark?
I tried.
I would move that we leave the signal light in place.
We have a motion to leave the signal line in place on East Verdic. Option number two.
Yes, well, this, Mr. Mayor, both options, one and two, leave that, leave it in place. So we need to know which of the two we're intending.
That's correct. So option one, basically leaves the signal in place and removes it from the H the project. Option two, we write the justification letter to the state to keep the signal there and to keep it in.
That was loud. Goodness.
Uh, push button improvements.
Scary. I thought we were nuclear war for a minute.
So out of those two, what's your, what would your recommendation be?
If we're gonna keep the signal there.
Well, mine might start raining here shortly.
We're also your weather team.
There's your. Service right there.
Okay with that?
Yes, option two.
Option two.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for option two. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Dancer?
Yes.
I assume this will be unanimous.
Yes. Pitner?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Samuelson?
Yes.
Bless him?
It's not even really that much more money.
Yes. No.
It's eleven thousand dollars more.
Moving on to item eight point. Second extension to the contract assignment between the city of Minnetonka and Mattson Construction. What are the wishes of the council?
I'll move approval.
I have a motion by Mike, second by Paul. Any discussion? Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just to, just to, more for the public's knowledge, I think, just to make sure we understand. So, um, the way that I'm reading the memo, all that we're looking for here is a couple of months date wise, um, no additional costs, just making sure we got everything buttoned up by the middle of December.
Yeah, Chris, if you want to come up, but we asked him beforehand, but if you want to come up and talk about where we at percentage wise on those two projects.
Uh, Mayor Ross, members of the council. Um, so yes, you are correct. Uh, all of them blessing, there will be no cost increase. Uh, we're just asking for, uh, some extension. There has been some delays. Uh, so they have found some contaminated soil that they needed to remove as well as some reconfiguration.
Where? Why? Why is it contaminated?
So there would be no.
There's a lot of stuff. I have more questions.
It's approximately eighty-five percent complete and seventeen unit LMI.
Maybe I will.
As your phone call right now.
Can you just, Chris, also then, um, does that still fit about what the timeline we?
The office number is in the memo.
Decision making early December. Was that the thought process?
Yeah, Mayor Ross and Alderman Blessing. Yes, we have the December sixteenth deadline that I am going to bring a new sub recipient to approval for council. So that would coincide with that date.
Now, this is with the project, Broadway Circle Project.
Any further questions? Of Chris. Thank you, Chris. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. Seeing none, please call the roll.
So no.
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Dancer?
Yes.
Pitner?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Samuelson?
Yes. Motion pass.
Called it.
Moving on to, uh, item.
Here we go. This is the one that could.
This is the one we've been waiting for.
Now is an opportunity for those who wish to speak. On the, uh, twenty twenty five proposed budget, now is your opportunity to step forward.
Don't tell me nobody comes forward.
There was way too many people for no one to come forward.
Second call.
Whoa! There's too many. There's like, well. Nobody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Um, Tom Warsaki, live at thirty-seven, forty-eight White Pine Circle. Actually, I have a question, uh, regarding the budget.
All right, Tom.
Uh, about a month ago, there was a.
Ring in Nebraska.
Consultant here on the benefits side of the budget. Uh, that made recommendations on what to do. And so I have a specific question as to what is the intention in the budget process on benefits? And then the reason why I'm asking this question is during that meeting, in my opinion, the city manager inappropriately talked to the city council about the fact that the city should not touch the benefits of any employee. And I think that was wrong. I think it was wrong to do it publicly. So I wanted to understand publicly, what is the intent, pardon me, what is the intentions of the city? Thank you.
Who's gonna reply?
No replies.
They don't, they're not required. Yeah, they're not required to reply.
Ultimately, the decision on benefits for the is up to the council at this point. The city manager recommended budget included full implementation of wage adjustments and increases. It included a five percent assumed increase of health insurance benefits, which we got that quote back at six point five percent. There is some potential changes that we can do to keep that within the five percent or less. Those were some of the presentations from Brown and Brown several meetings ago. I did advocate during that timeframe on behalf of the employees that, um, I would recommend that the benefits stay where they're at. That is not a directive that the council cannot change those if that's what you choose to do. That was simply my recommendation, trying to maintain, uh, employee concerns and morale and those kinds of things. But ultimately, that's a decision of the council and I hopefully will receive more clarity this evening from what the wishes of the council is and how you like to move forward with that.
Intriguing.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, um, one of the things, I guess, uh, and I'm glad that we got the answer right away. I would, I would like, within reason, if we could try to answer questions, I certainly, it can't be Q and A all night because we're facing a longer meeting anyway, but it within reason.
Oh, so we are facing a longer meeting. So is that six hours?
This is where it gets good.
City council members, Travis Sablotny, fourteen, twelve, Twelfth Street, Southwest.
Very frequent. Frequent, you know, city council meetings.
Question I want, or I got a question that I need a clarification on. Maybe I'll ask the mayor. Is it correct in my understanding that our budget surplus uh, is somewhere over, somewhere north of forty million and that it is in excess of what state law allows us to have? Is that correct?
I don't know. Is it, uh, are we at forty, Dave?
Dave Lakefield, the man himself.
He knows everything.
I wish I had a mind that worked.
He will give the exact details on this. He takes a while to walk up.
To address that, uh, state has, uh, a limitation on the amount the city can carry over in what's called the interim fund. And that is limited to seventy-five percent of, uh, the, what's in the general under what the expenditures are that's budgeted. And in our last financial report, we ended the year, we were in excess of that amounts. We had a corrective action that we had to do and implement a plan. And we've had that conversation at a prior meeting. Basically where that, uh, excess funds came from is from the, uh, process of saving up for large capital projects. And we just didn't transfer them, those funds into the capital projects. We left it in a general fund and that caused us to go over temporarily.
Doesn't sound so bad.
Not, not.
But we'll see what.
See what Travis says here.
So I guess my follow-up question would have been what, what is our plan to address that ultimately? And is there a plan in this budget cycle?
It's like that was kind of addressed by the.
It's my understanding, and maybe I'm wrong. But it's my understanding that our budget surplus comes from budgeting, uh, for example, positions that don't get filled, the taxpayers still fulfill their obligations by providing the taxes levied that are budgeted for filling positions and then the dollars that don't get spent go into that surplus. And this goes on year after year, as I understand, at least in recent years. And that we build up these large capital, uh, reserves. My concern with that is what the city does with. is what the city does with it. Because what I witnessed over and over again, that money is no problem or no object when a special spending project comes up. Why? Because we got it in reserve. So it seems to me that we intentionally many times over budget, don't fill positions or don't spend the money, put it in reserve, and now it's just a slush fund to do whatever it is that this body decides to do. And what I'm seeing most times, it's not something that is a necessity in this city. And the taxpayers are funding it. And that isn't what they were led to believe, um, or at least should have been led to believe had they participated at all in the process, which, by the way, I'm going to say this on record.
All right. Uh-oh.
The next time I hear a citizen complain about taxes in the city of Minnetonka, I'm going to ask if they've showed up to any budget hearings because I know what the answer is for most of them. Do what you do. It's because nobody voices uh where they, where they stand.
Travis with a great point.
Disgusting to me. And so citizens uh stop complaining and show up to this process. But nonetheless, um.
I digress.
I would like to see those reserves brought down. I think they become uh too tempting to spend on things that aren't necessary.
To make a second call and how we're getting some great discussion. Yes, I got, yeah, well, you got to make a second call. I got scared for a second.
What was it, wish to speak?
Nobody in the city council responds. Not that they should have.
Seeing none, one of the wishes of the council.
Wow, two people.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing.
A motion by Mike, is there a second? We have a second by Paul.
Two.
Any discussion?
It's two more than it could have been.
Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bless him?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Dancer?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Motion passed to close the public hearing. That's me. Oh, Samuelson, sorry.
That was a yes.
Sorry, the votes go in.
Forgot poor Scott.
Okay, now is the time for uh discussion uh among the council. Um, as we go through the budgets, just a few, we want to keep it for staffing. And I think at this time, Dave, if you and Jenna want to move up front, we're going to have our finance team up front.
Oh. They're just bringing it up front. They're getting the big guns ready. Just come sit front room. Well, I was like, we gotta get out of here early. Nope. It's, it's getting.
Yeah, that was a motion to close the hearing. So now we need a motion. I would entertain a motion to approve on the first hearing to move forward.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Now that's where.
Okay. Right, guys, like, well, we're gonna go ahead and approve this right now?
Just to keep it uh, keeping in mind the staff who's going to be, if there are changes that are coming, um, just to try and keep them as clean as possible. Uh, we'll vote on an amendment. I just don't want to jump down into the rabbit hole of amending amendments and amendments. So we'll try and keep it clean.
Sounds like quite the rabbit hole.
So uh, we'll start.
We get deep.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I think we need to address Mr. Warsaki's question. We'd had a memo from the city manager, I think, late last week regarding the, the benefits and perhaps some, some changes in, in what we could consider. Um, and so whether the city manager or the city finance director has information for us, I'd appreciate it.
Oh, they're at the little table up front even.
Dan. Mr. Mayor, Elderwoman Olson, um, I think we'll be working through that here shortly with the process. Um, HR department has been working with the consultants. There are a number of different options to be considered to bring that cost down with the benefit package. And some of them have no impact on employees and just it impacts the, the city's risk tolerance a little bit. Um, and some of the other options do have some impacts to um some of the employee population.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Dave, just to continue on that, then, is it your, is it your suggestion that we give you a little bit of time and we, we handle some of that at the, at the last reading?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Alderman Blessing, I think we have numbers for these options to decide on. And I think earlier would be our preference.
Okay.
Michaela?
Um, I just want to let you know, um, Lisa, Katie Videl is on and she is with Brown and Brown. So if there are any specific questions relating to their presentation, I believe she came on to the meeting via Teams to answer anything for the council as well.
Any discussion? Any amendments? Mike?
All right, so let's get the fun started. Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we accept the city manager and HR director's hybrid wage plan for twenty twenty-five.
Hybrid, there we go, one point seven.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Ooh.
We have a motion.
Everyone wants to second it.
Any further discussion? Mike?
All right, so Mr. Mayor, uh, you know, this is one that, um, you know, I, I've been on the record saying I was uncomfortable up front. Um, I don't think in my mind that it makes sense to try to fix our budget woes on the backs of staff. And so as I went further through the process, though, the recommendation of the city manager, the recommendation of the HR director, these are the two folks in our organization at the city that have the most knowledge and the most, I guess, background to give us a recommendation. And so I took that into account.
You can't trust these people.
Kind of how to get my mind around it, right? As I looked through the numbers, I worked with the HR director to understand top to bottom, employee by employee, understanding what this was doing person by person. I can tell you that I feel comfortable. Um, one of the reasons for that is, is that the original, um, the, the original two point three full plan adjustment resulted in over seven percent across the board for our staff. And, and there's nobody here saying that they're not worth every penny that we pay them and whatever we can. That's not the question here. The question here is how does that line up with the market? How does that work within our budget and the, the different challenges that we have with that? How does all of that work together? And the thing that I'll tell, I'll tell the council, I'll tell the public is that in all of my thirty years in, in the, in private industry and working in businesses and senior leadership at major Fortune five hundred corporations, a five percent increase on average across the board is incredible. In all of my time at Delta Airlines, um, I think we hit four and a half one year. Most of the time it was three. Some years it was two to two and a half. And so the fact that we're able, even with the hybrid plan, to give five percent, I feel very good about. I think it's the right direction and it, and it, I, I applaud the city manager, the HR director for bringing that forward because it was important that we take into account what the public is saying and that the tax burdens that are there and making sure that this all works. And so that's why for me, this is the right plan and the right number.
Any further discussion?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, um, while I'm partially in agreement with Alderman Blessing, I sat down and I looked at this. And, you know, first I want to applaud Harold and the city staff um for the budget they brought to us. It gave us a really good starting point. I, I, I honestly believe they did a good job. I think we have a unique opportunity here, though, to make right choices uh while still achieving significant savings within our city budget. By doing the right thing, I mean ensuring that we properly support and care for our city employees. I mean, we hear constantly how great our city employees are, how awesome our city employees are.
We said it here too, without a doubt.
So we don't lose these city employees.
Because it's true.
I'm with Mike. I understand that there's a certain amount of increase that's appropriate and not appropriate. My, my question is.
Now we get the good stuff.
The hybrid plan that the city uh manager and HR brought to us saved us about seven hundred thousand dollars. And the Brown and Brown plan um to reduce the insurance benefits is about um four hundred and some odd thousand dollars, depending on which way we go. I think that was the most we could save. Uh, so that's about one point one to one point two million dollars. My question is, people, we have a two hundred and twenty-eight million dollar budget. You're telling me we cannot cut one point one to one point two million dollars anywhere else out of this budget other than the employees' wages and the employees' insurance benefits? I mean, that's absolutely astounding to me. I've looked at budgets for twenty years.
And so it begins.
You can always find places to cut that don't cost the employees. And, and as Mike said, why are we taking these cuts off the employees' backs? I mean, these people go to work and I, I, going forward, I think everybody's going to have to realize we have to look at some kind of alternate um wage increase because as we've heard a number of times, it is not sustainable doing what we're doing right now. Now, I don't care how we do it. I mean, we can, I, I had looked at a couple of things. Um, I had spoken briefly with Lisa about some things. My question is, why do we, I, I, and we have grades within the city, right? Certain grades make above a pay level and certain grades make below a pay level. And so my plan, or what I've looked at, is to take the grade level seventy-six, seventy-six in that grade level and above are our highest wage earners in the city. And seventy-five and below are our lowest wage earners in the city. Now, the seventy-six and above can have a two and a half percent raise. Those people make the most money. And during hard economic times, they're the ones that can absorb the little bit of an increase, decrease that they would see. But the people that are below that level, making that money, that is everyday people, the boots on the ground people, our police officers, our street workers, all of those guys who are making a living and they're in the hardest financial and economic economy we'll probably see in our lifetime over these last two or three years. And we're talking about taking from them. I have a hard time with that. Now, one of the things we can do, like I was saying, is, is above that grade seventy-six, give those, those people their two and a half percent raise and give everybody below seventy-five and below their full step and merit raise, again, knowing that next year, we have to address our wage increase and how we're going to do it. Now, having said that, I think, a, a, and if we do that, that saves us, I think the hybrid plan saved us seven hundred thousand. That plan would save us, what I just suggested, would save us about a hundred and ten thousand dollars. The other thing I wanted to say is we leave the employees' benefits just exactly how they are and we take the uh stop loss up to that hundred and twenty-five or hundred and fifty mark, which brings our plan down to about the same as we paid last year. So there's no increase, no difference whatsoever. So how do we go ahead and do all this without increasing taxes or any of that other stuff? Well, I've looked at a couple of different things in this budget and I've identified eight or nine different GL accounts that we can targetly or selectively target and pull that one point two to one point one million dollars out of and keep everything the same. Maybe we don't buy a certain piece of equipment this year, but we look at it later down the road or, or whatever it is. Another option that we have, and, and I'll be honest, this one to me, I, I know we're going to have a lot of discussion about this, but we have this general fund reimbursement line item every year that we put three to three and a half million dollars back into the general fund. Now, most of these funds are prodded in through the levy and given to different departments within the city uh that use those property taxes to function. And then we turn around and we give them back to the city because, oh, the attorneys helped with this or, you know, this department helped this department with this. That to me is, is um odd because in, in twenty-five to thirty years of, of business, I've never seen any entity that I've worked for, talked to, or worked with, that if one department within their company helps another department, they reimburse each other for the work done. They're all city employees doing city work. So why would we need to reimburse? So in my mind, what I see is those levied funds come in, they get used in the department, and part of them are given back to the city. I don't necessarily want to say they're cleaned, but levied funds have a restricted use that you can use them for. And when they come back to the city, they go into the general fund and we can use them for whatever we want to. So ultimately, the easiest thing to do was this year, our general fund reimbursement is just over three point five million dollars. My recommendation, so we don't have to dig through all the general or the um, the GL accounts with Dave and everything, is to just reduce our general fund reimbursement from three point five, six million dollars down to one million dollars. That gives us a savings of two point five, six million dollars. And I know somebody's getting here is going to pop up and they're going to say, hey, that's going to prove that we're going to have to, you know, the mills are going to come up. Well, I'm going to argue that because every single year, we overtax, we underspend, and money goes into our general fund. So if we actually even this out where we aren't doing that, we're not going to have to change the mills or do anything at all to accomplish this goal.
With them?
You know, to me, it, it makes more sense than anything else out there.
Look at the flip side. You do that too often, you risk running.
But I mean. Or can we pay our city employees and leave their insurance where it's at and then address this next year, knowing everybody in the city now knows we have to look at this. We have to figure this out because we can't keep doing these increases on the backs of the employees and on the backs of the citizens paying taxes. It just can't keep going. So while I understand there's a motion on the floor and I don't know the correct way to do this, I think we need to amend um the approval of the hybrid system and go with my hybrid two point O or whatever we want to call it at this point and try and figure this out. Give the employees what they were told they uh deserve and get. And then next year, um, address both the general fund reimbursement account and the employee wage increase in a more fair fashion than I think it currently is. Thanks.
Is that in the form of an amendment, a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment then. We had a motion on the floor.
Well, let's, 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 let's go through the first.
I had one other thing there too. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I also want to say that I think we need to move both the fire and the police pension systems back over to the first responder purrs. And, you know, I know it's going to be said, well, where do we get the money to do that again? It's going to cost us roughly two hundred and forty to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're sitting on forty million dollars in excess reserves in our general fund. I think we can afford it. We just bought a nine hundred thousand dollar piece of property that we're going to put a flood channel through. For God's sakes, let's do the right thing here.
No, sorry.
I just love how much that purchase has just been lingering.
Kind of take place. We have a motion and a second on the floor. That would have to be voted down and then um we would uh, you'd be able to make your motion. Does that sound perfectly fine?
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. So are we, is that what we decided? I mean, we didn't vote on that. Are we, are we not amending motions?
So I think that's what the chair had kind of set up before this meeting was that he wanted to dispart, like, to resolve the amendments as they were presented to the general motion. If you want to rescind your initial motion, that would be one way to dispose of it as well. If you want to, a, and if the second agrees to rescind your, your amendment, you could do that. So.
That's not my intent.
Okay, so then the motion on the floor would be to adopt the hybrid plan. There's been a motion in the second. That would be the motion before the floor. We're still kind of in the middle of the discussion.
They have to turn, they have to vote down the hybrid plan before Fuller could have his motion.
Offer his amendment up in regards to the wage plan.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I, if I can continue, or is, is it, is it your ruling as the chair that we're not entertaining amendments to the motions?
Yeah, in the past, and I'm going even last year, we, we just, and I'm, I'm doing that on the, the benefit of the staff, just so, you know, if we keep going down, amending amendments to amendments to, and it, I mean, it's just a, a paperwork nightmare. So I just like, I would just like to have it cleaner, smoother, you know, let's entertain your motion. Your motion's on the floor. You got a second. We're having discussion. If that goes, it goes. If it doesn't, then we have an opportunity to have Councilman Fuller's uh motion come to the floor.
Dude, that sounds awful. It's just pouring outside, folks, sorry.
Any further discussion?
Mildly distracted right now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think Michaela told me.
I'm sure they can hear it in the background. I bet they can. I'd be shocked if not.
But um, in all seriousness, I, again, I, I appreciate the hybrid plan. I appreciate the work done by staff. I, 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 I'm somewhat aligned with Alderman Fuller and, and, and his idea. I, and I agree that when you see these four, five, six percent increases to staff with wages.
Uh-oh. Having some issues here, folks.
Maybe a Stockholm syndrome.
Might have to leave this stream early. We're getting some water tech issues inside the building here.
Be happy you got four. You should be happy you got three. Um, I think.
Going to give it a couple of minutes. We're going to keep listening to Alderman Fuller here or Alderman Pittner talk on the budget, but uh we're definitely having some issues. We might have to end the stream early here. We'll, we'll keep you posted, but we're going to keep listening to Alderman Pittner here right now.
I guess my point being, we've done this before. We've done this before where we, we've neglected employees with wages and benefits. And we saw mass exodus, exodus that cost this city millions of dollars. Um, and, and I'm not willing to repeat that mistake. Um, I think the city can find, we, we found, we found it. The, the staff did their job. They, they gave us a zero increase budget with a full uh pay plan in place. Um, I, I'm not interested in saving a couple bucks or a couple pennies. I'm on the backs of our employees.
We're having some water issues coming into the building right now. Luckily, it's not in the studio, but.
Because it's easier to keep our employees and find new ones. And it's a hell of a lot less expensive. So I'll, I'll be voting no on the motion on the floor. Lisa?
Yeah, thank you. So I, I think back a few meetings, it was our HR director, when she was making the recommendation that we look at the hybrid plan, that some of our employees would not.
That some of our employees would not get either a raise or much of a raise. And if I remember correctly, I think it was some of our employees that are working at the nine one one dispatch center. So if we could get a clarification on that, because while I'm in favor of taking care of our employees, I don't want to see one group of employees not get a raise.
Uh, Alderman Olson, uh, Mr. Mayor, all of our employees, even with the hybrid plan, would get some sort of a raise. We do have some employees that are at their top, uh, step and their grades have not moved, so they are at a maximum raise of two percent.
But if we adopt the full plan, is there any group of employees that will?
All righty, folks, um, we're at the point, um, we're getting water and I'm going to have to call it here. I apologize. Make sure you check us out tomorrow, two P M. Here live, we're going to be on Minnetonka.
They will get what has been promised.
My decoder dot com, the decoder on Facebook and YouTube. Make sure you check us out. Uh, sorry for having to cut this early, but yeah, we're getting, um, flooding from the screen coming into our studio here. We apologize. We're going to have to cut it early. You folks have a great night.
My friend Rob has suggested, we've got work to do then, to figure out how to do the other things that have also been identified as important.